Please raise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we will call the meeting to order. We have an agenda, are there additions or corrections?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Ted, I'll second.
Tom moves, Ted seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Public input, is there anybody here who would like to address the board? Okay, we have one, please sign, just sign your name on the podium there and then you can have a seat on the chair. If you would prefer.
I'm here twofold.
Okay.
Gentlemen, and first, I want to address some township roads. I'm going to hand this to you, who can look at it and pass it around. I think a lot of what it is is very explanatory. They, when they grade the roads, they don't grade them properly. Because they leave an edge, and in low spots, the water builds up towards the center of the road, there's not enough crown. And it causes potholes, it causes rough roads. I've circled areas where there's standing water, where the edges are draining because of the berms on the edge of the road from not properly grading it. The graders really need to drop their blade over the edge just a little bit, pulling that gravel back up into the center, make it a little bit more of a crown. The two roads that we live on that are dirt is County Thirty and Castline Road. And last year, Castline Road, just north of three eight four five nine, washed out with a deep, approximately eighteen inch by two foot or between two and two and a half foot wide area after a heavy rain. Now, if there had been a proper graded road with no berm, it wouldn't have settled there and it wouldn't have washed out, it would have gone down through the ditch. I don't, I've talked with Herb McCormick, two or three times. And he kind of dismissed me, asking me how in the world I know how to grade a road. Well, between the ages of thirteen and sixteen, my dad and I graded township road down in Otter Tail County. We lived a mile west of Richville, and we brought the road back proper. We had the old fashioned wood, or a steel grader that originally was horse drawn. We pulled it behind our tractor, and we brought the crown back up to where it should be, and it never washed out. We did that, like I say, from the age of thirteen to sixteen when the folks sold the farm.
Okay. But just to inform you, Herb has retired.
I've heard that, I didn't know who was in charge. I don't know who grades the road, I understand that it's not the county, it's hired out, that's what I was told.
On Thirty, I don't, I don't know if that one's hired or not. Adam, do you have any idea?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, I can definitely look into it.
If it would be, it would probably be either Storey or, uh, Gladen was the other one up there, yeah.
The reason I say that, whoever plowing it, they came down Castline last week, either first part of this week or last week, and graded it. And then when they came back, they went down Thirty and came back and finished Castline.
Okay. Yep.
Now, I understand in the future, Thirty is going to be tarred.
The desire is to upgrade it, yes.
Yeah, well, it should have been done a long time ago. Right there by Bob's boats, there's a big pothole, at least that big or bigger, and deep, that nobody seems to attend. I thought of going there and just dumping some sand or gravel in there, but it's not my responsibility. I do take care of, right by our property there, three eight four five nine. I, we try to keep it mowed, on the one side, the other side we can't because it's too deep. But like I say, if they could, if they could plow it properly with no berms on the edge, and bringing the crown back up, especially in the, in the low spots of the road, that's where it settles the most. So.
Yeah, I know CAS doesn't take care of that section of road, it is Hubbard's responsibility for maintenance, they plow it and they also grade it, so, yeah.
Now, we've, we've got some friends that live on the north side of, what's the lake, Marcel? Steamboat. And the road going back into them has a beautiful crown, no berms on the edges, I mean, it's just nice. Really nice, and that's the way it should be.
Is it a township road or a county road?
I'm sure that's township.
Alright.
But doesn't the county plow the township roads, or do they hire that out?
No. We, we try not to be involved in too much township activity, because there's contractors out there available to do it, and we don't have enough manpower and resources to do everything.
Well, I was told by township members to bring it to the county board.
Okay.
So, that's what I've done. The second issue is property tax. Shelley, you want to sign in? And then she will speak with you, or we will speak with you.
And, and your name, sir?
Keith Willis. And her name is Shelley Jacobson.
Thank you.
And we both live at three eight four five nine.
Thank you.
Well, my concern is with the property taxes here, a couple years ago, something got messed up with the new computer system. Well, we were in Arizona when that happened, and I didn't realize that there was a problem with it. And then when I did call in, when I found out on Facebook what was going on, I called in and they said, oh yeah, you were affected, we'll fix it for you. And then it was probably a month later, I learned on Facebook again that you had to sign a form in order for them to fix it. And so I called back in, I said, was I supposed to sign a form, and they said, yes. And I said, well, I, you didn't tell me that when I called in the first time. I said, send me that form, well, then it was too late. So now I don't know if my property taxes are too high, or what's going on with it.
It was way over evaluated.
Overvalued?
I think so.
Yep. And, and I was a witness, because she had it on speakerphone. When the gentleman came out to evaluate it, he said, well, we have a problem. Value of shous, we don't know how to tax them yet. But he says it won't go up much if it goes up any.
Yeah, because they said they're popping up all over and they don't know how to assess them.
Yeah.
But it went way up.
Way up.
The evaluation.
Yep. So we, we would like to get that straightened out.
Alright, well, when, when you do leave here today, I do welcome you to stop at the assessor.
We have already, and they said, oh, it's, it's all taken care of. I still don't believe it, because it's, it's not only caused problems with higher taxes, but it's caused problems with the bank, they.
Yeah, they didn't assess it right.
And so, anyway.
Yeah, I, we can't do anything about assessments, especially if it's after the fact. So I would speak with the assessor and just see if there's any paperwork that still needs to be accomplished, or if she can provide you with something proving that, hey, it is taken care of, just so you have peace of mind.
Yeah.
Just, just for your information, you're, you're not alone.
No.
Every, virtually every property in Howard County over the last three to five years, across the state, valuations have almost doubled.
Yeah.
Now, valuation increases doesn't necessarily mean your taxes are going up, so know that.
Well, my taxes.
If everybody's valuation went up at, at the same rate, and the levy stayed the same, it would have no impact on your taxes. Now, I can't speak for the school or the townships. But yeah, everybody's valuations have gone, mine is well over doubled on my place, too.
Yeah, my taxes.
And that's the market, that's not us, that's the market doing that.
It's the market and the fact that the system screwed up.
Yes, that, that may be, but that's not a, that's not a function the county board controls. That's a state function, state sets the rules for property taxes, we just administer. The only thing we have any control over, and your local board of appeal would have, is your assessed value if they find something in error. But you've got to follow the proper procedures as stated on your valuation.
But we tried to talk to the assessor, and the lady says he's not available, and I've called down here once, he's never available.
It's, it's her, but she's.
Or her, excuse me.
That, that would be surprising, because it's not the experience most people have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I shall be sure to hope to see the roads done better. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else for public input? Alright, seeing none, we will move on in the agenda. We have the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Dave moves, is there a second?
Mr. Ted, I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Alright, motion carried. County employee recognition.
Good morning. For county employee recognition today, in the auditor treasurer's office, we have Lori Savoy, accounting technician, began the full-time position on June fifth. And in the sheriff's office, Lucas Kritzek, deputy sheriff, began the part-time position on June fourth. Darren Kavanaugh, deputy sheriff, began the full-time position on June ninth. And Matthew Dianco, recreational security officer, began the part-time position on June sixteenth. And in solid waste, Clark Erickson, certified attendant, began the full-time position on June ninth.
Alright, thank you. Highway survey?
Morning.
Morning.
We just had one item on the agenda today, and that was to approve our LREP grant agreement with Mendat. We were awarded just over one point three million out of the LREP funds for our CASA seven and forty roundabout project this year. So we just need a signed resolution agreeing to that Mendat agreement there.
What's the proposed start date, the twenty-third?
Um, it actually moved up to the nineteenth, so this week.
Oh.
Um, they're gonna start, the detour will be put in place and start removing pavement.
I've had questions.
Sure, yep.
The last time I heard it was like the twenty-third, so I will warn them.
Yep. And they're, they did put out kind of a seven day notice, sign, like on the road stating when construction was gonna start, so hopefully some vehicles saw that, so.
Very good. Okay.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Dave moves, is there a second?
Mr. Ted, I'll second.
Ted seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Alright, I can just give a quick construction update. The aggregate surfacing, we just have to finish Fern and Rockwood Township this week, and that project should be wrapped up. Calcium chloride, we're just over fifty percent complete. We've got probably two to three weeks of good weather, we're estimating, and we can wrap that one up. The CASA forty-five bridge, that start date did get pushed back to June twenty-sixth, so next Thursday. We're still estimating roughly through the end of August that the detour will be in place for that one. CASA one, we had our pre-construction meeting with R. Larson last week. They're estimating to start next week, they're not exactly sure what day yet. But that will go through the summer with an estimated completion date of October fifteenth. It will be done in two phases. The first phase is from Thirty-four to North Street. They should finish that first phase probably in August, and then Phase Two is from North Street to the city limits. The roundabout, like I just said, is starting this Thursday with an estimated completion date of August twenty-second. And then our CASA thirteen and City of Nevis project, talking with Anderson Brothers, they're looking at getting started the middle of August with that project, so.
Ways out yet?
Yep, that'll be kind of later this year, so.
I have one question on CASA one.
Yep.
We had a joint, or we, here at this board, we approved a joint agreement with the city, and then the city did not approve it. Does that just affect those other roads they were, they were planning on doing?
Yeah, I guess, I think we agreed to the joint agreement, but I think the city didn't approve part of the plan, the construction plan, to do their side streets.
Side streets, yeah.
So they're still involved with the project to do the city utilities underneath our CASA one.
CASA one, okay.
So they still, they do still have part of this construction contract, so they just decided not to do their side streets this year, so.
Thanks for explaining that to me, then.
Yeah.
I guess I do have a question about chloride. I've talked to a township, actually several of them, that may be regretting not participating in the chloride program.
Yep.
So how late is too late to participate if they wanted to add something?
Sure, um, I don't.
Would it still be done?
I think so, we can definitely look into that.
Okay.
Um, yeah, if you just want to have them call me.
Yeah, if there's interest from them, for sure.
Yeah.
I'll have them call you definitely.
And that'd be fine, and we just have to double check with EnviroTech's schedule, and make sure they have availability on the backend here to finish it up, but.
Okay, alright.
I'm not gonna say no.
I will pass that on.
Okay.
Definitely.
Yeah, and we'll look into that County Thirty grading issue there, I'll see who's doing that and.
Yeah, I didn't know if we were still doing it ourselves, I know, I know previously I've seen the,
Yep.
the Hubbard County grader out there, but I don't know if they're doing it regularly or just that one time.
Right, I'm not sure either, so we will look into that and, and make some improvements there, so.
Okay, alright. I guess I do have a question, I don't know if you know or not, the county does not own a berm disc, do they?
I don't think so. I can definitely see, what is that used for?
To disc the material along the shoulder to, to bring it up onto the road, or to turn it into basically kind of like a field would look like after you disc it. And then it can be either retrieved, put back on the road.
Yep.
It's top, typically topsoil materials, but there is gravel in that, in that shoulder edge.
Do they work pretty good?
They do, CASA has several of them.
Okay.
One on a tractor and one mounted on a motor grader.
Yeah, I'll talk to Eric if we've got.
It's just something to think about, I know they're not cheap to purpose, hard to purchase, but it might be a good alternative for keeping up.
Areas like that.
And when you have areas like that, where you get a high shoulder and it can't get rid of water.
Yep.
But they're, both of those roads are probably in need of gravel, judging by the sounds of it.
Yep.
They don't stay in shape very long, and I know they're pretty sandy.
Yep.
Because I've been on them quite a few times, but, yeah. Okay? Anything else?
That's all I had.
Okay, anything for Adam? Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Cory.
Good morning. Just one thing today, it's our July, it's the agenda items to review and approve, fifteen tracts of timber to be sold at our July seventh, two thousand twenty-five timber auction. That'll be held here in this room, July seventh, at nine o'clock in the morning, and tracts will be sold, sold to the highest bidder. The appraisal value for the tracts is two hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars, and that's nine thousand eighty-six cords of mixed species of timber. So we're, we have this new management plan, and we're trying to, trying to follow it the best we can, and so there's a little more aspen and pine on this. Which is, which is good, because those are, those are selling, selling well right now, so. Yeah, we're looking for, for approval for the, to hold, hold the timber auction and sell these fifteen tracts.
Mr. Ted, I'll make a motion to approve.
Ted moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Aye? Opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Alright, thanks. And just a couple things, we did get the, the fishing pier delivered, it's at the shop right now, Public Works, but it's, it's big, it'll be really nice, it's something that'll be well used, I'm sure.
Did we get the final report?
The final report, we haven't, we haven't, it hasn't been approved yet, they said it'd take four to six weeks, so it's been, been a few weeks, so hopefully soon.
Did you request for demo bids in?
Um, we're, we have a draft written up, right when we get the, the approval from Shippel, we'll send that, send that out to different contractors and put it in the paper.
Really be nice to get that probably rolling.
Yep, yep. Yeah. So, park stuff's busy, it's going good, we're trying to improve what we can.
Find room for pickleball courts yet?
Yeah, we're definitely looking at spots, so.
Hey, you missed that meeting, we were talking about it, Parks Court meeting.
Yep, yep, so this next Monday, we're gonna, the pickleball club's actually coming in, and we're gonna, we're gonna discuss some spots. There is a tax forfeited lot, I know the HRA's interested in it, but it's right across from the, the depot tennis ball courts, or tennis courts. It'd be a, it'd be a wonderful spot, because there's bathrooms and parking and that sort of thing, but we'll have to see if the HRA's still interested in that lot, and go from there, but. Few different options out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Environmental services.
Good morning.
Morning.
Got two items for you, the first one is our aerial imagery contract with Eagleview. We currently have an agreement that runs through next year, for a final flight next year. What we recently learned from the vendor is they've upgraded their camera equipment, so that we had nine inch resolution for a good portion of the county in our current contract. They've upgraded their cameras to six inch resolution, and for whatever reason, they said that they would have to digitally downgrade our resolution to nine inch in the areas that are in the current contract that are flown at nine inch. So they offered us an alternative, which would be to basically void the current contract and turn into a new one for the twenty-sixth flight, and then the second flight in twenty-nine, that would be countywide resolution of six inch. It would involve a slight increase in what we would pay for the twenty-sixth flight, but the savings that we would realize for the twenty-nine flight would far exceed the slight increase in the cost for the twenty-sixth flight, so over the course of the contract term, we'd be saving just under twenty grand. And, so I think the slight increase for the first year flight, it's inconsequential, it's a, you know, less than a couple grand a year that we'd have to increase, but then we'll see greater savings in the twenty-nine flight compared to what we would pay if we stuck with the current agreement and then entered into a new agreement for twenty-nine and probably thirty-two. So we've got the amendment document provided in the packet that would terminate the current contract, and then a new order form that would authorize entering into a new contract for flights in twenty-six and twenty-nine. Any questions on?
Yes, what do we use these images for?
All sorts of things, so we rely heavily on them in my department. It allows us to do a lot of things with high resolution in the office, in terms of assisting folks, so a good example would be somebody says, I wanna do something to my lake cabin. If we can measure the setback from the shoreline fairly well with the aerial imagery, it can save us having to go out to measure that physically, to be able to answer their questions of how can they do what they're looking to do. Cory's department might use it for forestry purposes, I'm sure the sheriff's department uses it quite a bit as well, same with dispatch for just being able to locate things, and the assessors use it quite heavily for their field assessment, too.
And it's also the basic, basis for the public GIS viewer on the website. I mean, everybody in Realtors, business, public, everybody uses the same imagery.
The public relies heavily on it.
Didn't you one time in the past say that you can compare the new flight with the previous flight, and see if any changes are made?
Yeah, that is another product they offer called Change Finder. There would be an additional contract that we would have to enter into if we wanted to do that, but they are able to compare one year's imagery to another year's, and then use their software to determine where new structures have appeared in the new imagery that weren't there in the prior imagery, and so that would be a tool that would benefit the assessor's office, and would benefit our office in terms of zoning compliance in shoreline, but.
We don't have that now?
We don't, it's been talked about for some time, but then with the turnover that's occurred in the assessor's department over the last several years, it's always kind of pushed it off, and with Tyler TaxCam conversion, so I don't know if they have plans.
I believe Maria's actually looking at getting it here, she wanted to get the boards first, but I think that's one of our, on our project. We had a meeting with the vendor here a couple months ago, our mother's still going, that came up, so.
Well, it's been talked about at this board with, with Eric in the past, if I remember it.
We, we don't have the software that automatically searches, but where did this go? Manually, you can go in and you can search and look at a parcel based on previous versions of the imagery that we have. So that all, all of those are listed in here, and this is the public viewer, this is available to anybody. Generally, I'm guessing this comes up with the most recent imagery, and if you wanna look at, if you wanna look at twenty-twenty. Just look at, just look at that one in three years. So, it, it, there's a lot of data in here, and we wouldn't be able to power this um, without updating that. And the more that we use it for detailed measurements and for code enforcement, the more the um, high resolution is, is necessary.
I know, excuse me, I know some of the uh, some of what you can see now is kinda disturbing too, it's like Big Brother looking at us. Uh, when we get to the one inch resolution, they'll be able to see what I'm cooking on the barbecue.
I, I don't think we'll ever get to that resolution, cause we don't need it, but.
Well, that's, that's kinda my question too then, from nine to six, do we need it? But if, if the contract in the long term ends up being less expensive, I'm in favor of that, but I'm not exactly in favor of the better resolution.
I agree with that, like, if it was just a one-year extension, I would say we pay for the one year and then we reevaluate in, for a twenty-twenty-nine flight, but because they include the discount price for the full county. I personally think it's worth the, the cost savings long-term to get it. Another thing that Eric did mention is we also get uh, access to oblique imagery, so we can see the angle of a house. Instead of just the top-down view, which allows you for like the assessors and environmental services, they can see more where there might be a tree, and wanting in the top-down view, you can actually see, oh, actually no, there's a structure in there that's not permitted or something like that, so. You can st- you can see things better with the oblique imagery, and that's something that we have access to through this company, so.
Yeah, the, the nine inch, uh, if we've, I mean, technology's obviously moving in a way that that won't even be available going forward, but it compared to six inch, you don't think that it makes a difference, but it does quite a bit in terms of being able to pick things out in the course of what we do day to day, so.
Will you be able to see topography better?
I don't know that it's topography so much as just definitions, so instead, I mean, if you're looking at it's, is there a, a good example would be an outbuilding, small shed, six inch resolution, you're gonna be able to tell, yes, that's a shed. Nine inch, you're gonna look at it and say, it might be a shed, it might be a tree, it could be something else, so. You know, I didn't uh, provide examples, but we do have them and it's, it's pretty telling, just what the three-inch difference makes.
And this is all um, included in your budget for the year, you can?
It's covered in the MIA, MIS budget, and we've visited with Fred about it, and he's comfortable with the slight increase for the next few years and.
Okay, any other questions for Eric? Alright, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Tom moves, is there a second? Dave seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, and the second last item that we have for you this morning is uh, software update for our GIS server, so last, uh, recently, we kinda did a catch-up upgrade as far as we went as far as we could with the version that wouldn't cause problems with leapfrogging too far forward, but now that we've got some other things uh, taking care of now, we're now ready to do a similar version upgrade, uh, again mainly so that we're trying to stay current with our software to avoid issues of, oops, we haven't done this in a while, and then it becomes a, a big deal, so we reached out to Pro West, uh, who is taking care of that for us, and they've given us a quote of you know, just under six grand, uh, for doing the work, and then they are looking to be able to do that probably this August. If you've got questions on specific details, feel free to ask Jack.
Anybody have any questions? Dave moves to approve, is there a second?
Mr. Ted, I'll second.
Ted seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Thank you.
Has it been a busy year?
Yeah, I, last week when I looked at permits, volume were uh, on par with the last few years, so. Things haven't slowed down, we hear people claiming that they're not getting as many people to bite on signing agreements for new construction, but permitting isn't supporting that yet, so.
One other question for, I think you got the same call, but I got a call from a constituent, somebody's basically operating a verbal or STR, but they're not advertising. What would be the options for discovering that and making sure they get a license?
Yeah, well, getting some, yeah, getting enough documentation for us to be able to do something is the challenge. And I haven't visited about that particular topic with uh, Mr. Olson, but when Mr. Frieden was uh, here as county attorney, he said it's not impossible to do something, but you'd have to see what data could be provided by neighbors, et cetera, and, and kinda take it on a case-by-case basis as to whether you'd feel there's enough uh, proof uh, to be able to take action in terms of enforcement.
Yeah, I've had, I've had a lot of comments from just in passing people that uh, families have gatherings with way more people than it would be allowed if it was a short-term rental. And it's, you know, two, three, four weekends out of the year, but there's nothing to, you can't do anything about the overuse of the, of the systems that are in place in the ground, so. And there, and then there again, they can have a free-for-all, they can put up as many tents as they want on their postage champ of property, but there's nothing that we can do to, to change the way they operate, so. And a lot of people are just disgusted with that, they have to pay a fee for a short-term rental, but yet families can do whatever they wanna do, so. Just a few comments that I've gotten, so. It's a struggle, it is.
I, I will.
It's a little trickier too, cause it's, it's on a private drive too, so it's like, even though there's cars parked along the private drive, it's we have no jurisdiction on it.
Yeah, overall, though, we are, you know, as far as folks coming in and then getting licenses, we've, you know, each year we see a increase in the number of folks that are getting licensed, so that to me says overall, you know, it's working pretty well.
And it seems to have addressed some of the problems that we're s- that we were starting to see happen prior to passing the ordinance, so.
And we had one property that was in the group that we audited this winter, and they came back and found that their well didn't pass for nitrate levels, so we did catch that, and they're gonna have to work to address that and get it in a some form of treatment to get an acceptable level if they wanna continue with uh, having the license renewed, so. You know, there are positives with the checks that we have in place too.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, just budget fund, if you wanna go into that.
No, not right now.
What the legislature did, but. I heard you already.
We should be, we should be okay with the AIS funding through twenty-six, it sounds like, but it's the following year that becomes the problem, right?
Yeah, and we'll have enough, and we have enough reserves that we could operate easily a full year at the current level without a blip, possibly a second, but you know, I'm sure we'll have to converse about if we wanna go that route or start easing off to make it last longer, and the biggest unknown is you know, what's the supplemental funding gonna continue to look like if we, when we get in the fiscal year twenty-eight, state fiscal. You know, we'll get half of what we receive for state money, which is it's two hundred sixty-four thousand and change now, that'll drop to a hundred thirty-two. The supplemental funding this year was over a hundred ninety thousand, so you know, we'll have a meeting with Colaf uh, representatives, uh, first part of July. You know, they kinda knew that this was a possibility, but now that it's reality, we'll have to see if we can get a sense of what they think might happen on, on their end, and they may not know, you know. I could see some people throwing down the towel, and I could see others saying we need to contribute more, so.
Alright.
Yeah, something to look forward to.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to administrator already.
Mr. Chair, I just have um, have a couple of updates related to the construction project. One is that uh, we finally stepped through all the hoops and uh, plus the, passed the plan review so that um, excavation can be, can begin on the new um, portions of the, of the jail garage and the, and the dispatch area. And I believe that's gonna start next week, um, I'm not even sure that they're not gonna be here this week working on the demolition of that old garage, so. That's good news, uh, the plan review was significantly more um, onerous than they had been in the past, uh, and it was a process that ICS had not seen before. So it's one more example of um, state. Making things harder for us to get things done rather than uh, working with us as a partner on that. And one other item came up, uh, the staff on the second floor wanted to go see what things were looking like, so last week I walked them down there and, and showed them what was going on. And I, then I talked about the fact that um, the security glazing, the safety glass at the counter, um, the specs are not done yet, so that, that glazing hasn't been ordered. And I told them, so that wouldn't be, that won't be here when we open up again, the week of July fourth, and they all said, well, can we just leave it out? And I said, I would not make that recommendation, but if you are fine with that, I'm fine with that, and having had a conversation to, with Eric briefly afterwards, he said, you know, that security glazing went in before we had screening at the front door. Right, so that was an effort to um, provide that protection and security before we had the primary level of protection and security with screening at the front door. And basically, the consensus is from the staff on the second floor to leave it out. Which will save us money, which will probably make the customer interface easier. And, you know, heaven forbid that something would happen, that we have an opportunity to put it back in later. So, I, after discussion with all the staff, I mean, literally all the staff on the second floor that were, that were here that day from both departments. Conversation with the construction manager and conversation with the architect, and the architect says essentially that is the customer's preference. There's no, there's nothing on there except what the customer prefers. So I guess at this point, based on all the data that I've got, I'm gonna recommend that we scratch that, which will save us money, which is good. Um, and the staff believe it's gonna allow them to provide better, better customer service. The real reason that it all got delayed is we got the new countertops in, and they were ready to drill the holes to, you know, for through the counter to put the wire, run the wires for the computers, and they didn't know where to put them, because we didn't have the specs for the security glass yet. So the whole thing came up and in conversation, I mean, the um, um, property records crew was just absolutely like, leave that out, it'd be much easier for us to provide services without it. And um, I think the only, the only question anybody had was related to, okay, well, we've got paperwork and documents that shouldn't be available, well, that room, that space isn't readily available outside of ours. But we did determine that the, the front counters have drawers in them, and none of them have locking mechanisms. So I will also change the spec that we put locking mechanisms on the top drawers and all of those, so that they have an opportunity if they and everybody else at their desks has locking spaces for the permits they're working on, if they're holding on to, you know, basically um, upfront, the one thing they keep is they keep one money bag, right? For when people pay with a check or cash for a permit, so, but that, we need a lockable place for that anyway. And we would need to do that with or without the glass, so. Just that point of information, it's, it's a big, it's kind of a big change, but in the end, it doesn't really seem like it's a big change. Because we do have the screening at the front door, and we do have the other active security measures um, in the building with the, uh, with the panic buttons, et cetera, so. If there's no questions or objections from the board, I would recommend that we make that change order and scratch that for now.
I, 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 I like it, that the staff actually brought this forward and that, I, I really appreciate that. Uh, in my head just now, just hearing about this stuff, the only thing I could think of would be an unruly customer that would wanna try to come over the counter, or drag somebody over the counter. But that's something I'm sure is rare.
Well, if that were the case. The security glazing really wouldn't stop somebody who had malintend.
True.
Um, and those counters, if you go, if you, we might just, next, after our next meeting, we're actually gonna go downstairs, because they're gonna be open, we're gonna have the furniture in, the staff's gonna be moving in. So after the meeting on July first, we're gonna get to go down and have coffee and, and donuts and just kinda see what the new space looks like. But that counter is almost three and a half feet deep. And it's, it's not kitchen counter height, it's like forty-two inches high. Somebody would really have to want to come across that. And nobody, I mean, everybody asked that question and nobody was terribly concerned about it. I think that, I think the only other office that doesn't have, well, there's two, two places that don't have physical barrier between them and the public, and that's my office in this room. So, um, eh, nobody was concerned about it. If we, if we had an incident, we would know how to respond to it. It's the typical level of, of disgruntledness that you deal with is the same one that we just saw this morning. And people are respectful when they come in, and they may, they may be angry, they may be upset, but most of the time, they just wanna be heard. Even before we had screening, um, people would carry, you know, a lot of people around here carry knives on their belts. Before we had screening, they brought them right up to the counter. And we, we never had an incident, so. The staff is really fairly unified in saying that that, they think it's gonna be helpful to not have it there.
Thank you.
But I did not wanna bring that up, as, I didn't wanna make that recommendation, but the fact that they made the recommendation is the only reason I'm bringing it to you because it, it seems to be what, what the unanimous. And if you look at, I don't know if you've been to other counties, but um, most other counties don't, don't have that every place. I know Aiken County just did a new project about four years ago, and their, their property records and environmental, they have a counter. And that's the physical barrier, but there's no glass, right? Otter Tail County, I don't believe they just have the counter, they don't have a physical barrier above the, above the counter, most of them don't. And truthfully, many of them don't have screening into the county building. Uh, they all have screening into the court and space. Uh, ours has just moved to the front door, so it's screening for everything in this building.
Still a few businesses in town that have, you know, the COVID screening. And I could tell you, somebody who has hard of hearing, it's a pain. Yeah, it, it knocks, it knocks the ability to hear what they're saying down by probably thirty, forty percent.
Stacy very much said, uh, Stacy Lee on the second floor, very much said, I have much quieter voice and people have a hard time hearing me, this'll make it easier for me to do my job. So.
Well, thank you for bringing that forward.
Yeah, I wanna, I, I'm not, I'm not signing the change order until I, until I had a conversation with you and just made sure we had, talked it through a little bit, so.
Well, is it board consensus then?
Cause like you say, we can always put it in later.
And then that is what I had for today, unless there are questions.
Any questions? So we will move on to committee reports. David, do you wanna go ahead and start?
I have nothing new since last time.
I'll keep it easy, I didn't have anything. Tom?
Well, I had several.
Well, you'll make up for us now.
Um, yeah, we had the Kitzkammere Regional Library Board Meeting last week, um, more discussion on the twenty-twenty-six budget. And uh, we had a lot of discussion on the, cause we had three proposals for the wage analysis proposals. And um, the consensus was to go and table it, because um, you know, the prices varied a lot from sixteen thou- there's only twenty-two employees that would be evaluated from sixteen. You know, the prices varied a lot from sixteen thou- there's only twenty two employees that would be evaluated from sixteen thousand, just for the basic uh. Wage analysis all the way down to two thousand five hundred, so. Wanna check more on references and things like that, decide. So all we need, I I'd kind of like to have a number going into the negotiations. Um, that's my own, my, that was my own input on it, so hopefully we'll get at least a very minimum. Um, and then also the library had, and this goes along with the LAC mental health board meeting, I had that, LAC. Uh wellness at the park went very well for all of um the booths. For the library, well, first of all, there was over two hundred participants attended, the library had uh about a hundred and forty six interactions. Uh fifty nine participated in their art project and thirty five signed up for their summer reading program. So overall, everyone was really satisfied with that wellness at the park, so I think they're gonna do it again next year. Um, and then we had uh on the LAC quite a bit of um discussion on transportation. Um, some of the uh, they they, they're a group that uses it quite a bit and some of them have said that they've seen. Three buses at one time, say at Walmart, you know, and uh. And there'd only be a couple, few people in each bus, so it's kind of a, need to get their, a little better on their uh dispatching. On that, then, one of them suggested um an app for a phone where you actually wouldn't have to talk to somebody, you just put in your uh. Your request and it would be kind of almost like Uber does. So it's, there's some ways to better streamline that to make it more efficient. Um, then I had uh yesterday went to Moorhead for the Dancing Sky area agency on aging. Had discussion on grants, I think um a matching grant request for twenty twenty six from the county is going to be. Oh, gee, I had that in here somewhere. It was uh. For next year, five thousand five hundred and forty four, it was for twenty twenty five, five thousand four hundred and seven. Um, funding is down because of art money expiring, they all got so used to that money, but. You you would try to tell them that um that art money is, a lot of, a lot of that money went straight to the federal debt. Adding to that, can't keep doing that, um. The senior liquor lines is gonna get a name change, that they don't know exactly what it is yet, but um. Services will still be there, it'll just be combined with other um services to seniors.
Um, that's about all I got. Good, thank you, Ted?
Um, I had one, Foston, uh I realized when I got here this morning that I didn't have any of my paperwork for that. So, but the only thing I can remember that of of us, uh we didn't get any funding through the state for the nine county projects or anything like that. So the next, our next board meeting, I'll bring that stuff and have a better report.
Okay, uh meetings to note, it's a long list. I didn't expect to see that.
Well, it'd be a good conversation then to, um, I had a comment about. The Hubbard County Township Association meeting not being listed at one point. And that just made me think about what is the intended purpose and use of that portion of the agenda? And if it's to uh point out the committee meetings that are coming. Um, as well as AMC things that are going on, then that's all of what's coming, so you folks are a very busy group.
Well, I I personally like the reminders, cause I don't always remember to put it on my paper calendar and I'm terrible putting things on my phone calendar. So I I appreciate this. Definitely, at least it's a reminder that, oh, hey, Ted's gonna go to this, you know, I should, if I have questions, I should pass them on to him.
And this is a, it'll be kind of a a work in progress, obviously, some weeks. Are going, the list would be smaller, you know, now we're going into a a larger gap between. Uh, between agendas, so there's more this time to cover into January, very to July, um.
Now let's not go backwards.
No. Or forward that far, so if this is beneficial, then I can, I can work on improving that. There are some meetings that I don't have all of the details on when and how often and where and what time and all of those things. So I'll still be gathering some of that and I I have been speaking with some of you about that already.
Yeah, but the ambulance committee, we don't, that might be meeting quarterly, we're not sure yet.
Yeah.
One of the primary intentions was to identify meetings where more than a quorum of the board would be invited or attending. There's certainly some of these, when we're talking about external, external committees or other meetings, that would be at your discretion. When we're talking about internal meetings like personnel and public safety and transportation, those shouldn't be on this list. Because they're internal meetings and they're not open to the public. Um, so. The the primary and and I, there are certain things that fall in gray areas between there, um. I can see that there's some value in the public being able to see. The the meetings that you're attending on behalf of. Um, of in your positions, but I don't know, I don't know if we should be. Putting other people's schedules out if those meetings aren't necessarily all public either, like HLDC and is not a public meeting. You know, so.
That's a very good point.
We will, we'll have to review this and and have some conversations, the. When we have the Cola Association meetings, that, those and the Township Association meetings, you guys all get open invitations to attend those. The reason we post them is is that that's basically saying there may be. A quorum of commissioners attending this meeting that is not directly county business, the AMC events and the training events we do for the s- for the same reason. Um, so. The biggest portion of the meetings to notice to identify when there may be a quorum of of commissioners. Present um in that situation, so I I don't.
I like the idea of the uh the library ones being out here, cause I get calls from people asking about materials, their collections and.
But if we put them on here, then they're gonna call us and ask for those materials and we don't have.
Well, yeah, well, this just lets them know when the meeting is and not then go to that meeting, not not to this right here.
Yeah.
That that's what this whole, you just said, this whole purpose is. Cause I know about those public meetings.
Yeah.
Library's a public meeting.
It is, but I I don't like advertising not our data. And I don't know if the library board has a website where they have their notices posted, they should, if it's a public meeting. So I thi- this is, this is a conversation that we'll have to continue, but. There's certain things on here that shouldn't be on here and the primary intention was to. Identify up like County Board of Appeal and Equalization, we're all gonna be there, it's just, it's a, it's a other than regular meeting. AMC district meeting makes sense, um even the Township Association and the Cola Association makes sense because you've all received invitations and. As far as I know, there may be a quorum of you or may not be a quorum of you at that meeting, not our meeting, not conducting county business. Um, but that's, that's the primary purpose of this.
So we can still consider this just a work in progress?
Yep.
For notification purposes, and and I think that's fine.
I I appreciated it to, because I've had questions about the public safety and transportation meeting being on the fourth of July, I'm assuming.
That's one I specifically don't want on here. We will not have a meeting on the fourth of July, I guarantee, we'll have a conversation about rescheduling or postponing to August.
I would suggest we leave it to the administrators' discretion and what goes on there.
And I just realized too, looking at it, the Mississippi Headwaters Board, um because of. Because our fiscal year ends at the end of June, we moved our meeting up to this Friday, June twentieth. Just a couple of weeks ago, we made that decision, um. And it's a complication where we're being asked to fund a project. And it may get approved, and if it gets approved, though, the check wouldn't be written till after July first. And then that isn't counted, then it's being spent and it's just, so we decided to move the meeting up a week to take care of that.
And it's, that's also part of the problem is is not being able to have, you you, I also don't want to be providing inaccurate information. So it was just a way to get you all to start a conversation, um and. You know, I don't remember really having too much of a conversation, I'm sure Jeff and I did when when we, when I first started. But it's good to to circle back and, you know, to talk about it.
And I don't, um. The the terrible events that happened last Saturday, um. I don't fear for myself, I don't think that we are to the, I was surprised to have that happen uh to a state.
Yes.
Uh politician and stuff, uh it's kind of like, where where's, where are we going with this world? You know, so I I don't have fear for that at the county level, um so I hope nobody else does either. But something like this, that does it provide a place for somebody to confront you. And I said this too, when we were doing the 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 security stuff, I understand staff's concerns. Myself, they just wait for me when I come out the door, you know, so it's. It is what it is.
I was at a planning commission meeting a long time, a while back, and somebody who didn't get what he wanted. He came up close to the tape and board here and said, I know where each of you live. Literally said that. Bob Rock, he was the chair, and he he said, are you threatening us?
Good news is it's all recorded now, so if they make terroristic threats, there's firsthand evidence.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so we'll make a decision on uh public safety and transportation at the first meeting in July?
Or just leave it to the administrators.
I I'll, what I will do is I will find out from the department heads if they have anything for July and if they do, we'll probably push it to the eleventh.
Okay, alright, thank you. Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ted, is there a second?
I'm second.
Tom seconds, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried. So Mississippi Headwaters Board is the twenty.